I'm going to call the meeting on Milton Common Council Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 to order. And the first item is the roll call.
Here.
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 Okay, so the next item is the comments from the citizens present, and it's limited to three minutes per speaker. And I'm actually going to request our chief to say a few words. You want to say something, or you want me to say that?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I would like to say that our police department, they got the re-accreditation by the Wisconsin, we'll call "Viliog," or whatever that is called, and so not only they got the re-accreditation, they were mentioned as fabulous. And the other departments in Wisconsin, they want to follow some of the electronic record system which we have here. So the chief of that group was very, very complimentary of Milton Police Department. Let's give them a... There are total about 500 police departments in Wisconsin, and there are only 27 in Wisconsin which are accredited, and I don't know how many are re-accredited. So it's about 5 percent. And Milton is actually right at the top, so we all should be proud of it, and let's give a police department a big hand here. So I went with the police chief and the captains there yesterday, close to Milwaukee, and it was quite an experience to hear from the others what they thought of our police department. It was really great. Okay, so anybody else, other citizens who might... Yes, Ben?
Ken Nutt, Middleton Chamber of Commerce, speaking in support of the additional metro transit finance just discussed. We were looking at downtown and talking to some restaurant owners some time back, and they expressed concern over their people wanting to get out of the restaurant by the left or 10:00 to be able to catch a bus at 10:20 downtown. And by being able to have this later service, we not only deal with existing needs, all the way from Roman Candle down to Villa Dolce, but it also sets up the new restaurants coming in that have stated specifically that they'll be using students and downtown Madison residents for their positions. My understanding is we're talking potentially close to 30 riders just out of downtown. I've been able to get confirmation of valued at Greenway outside of potentially the Marriott. This late service will really help, potentially really help downtown as Middleton Center begins to evolve by making it easier for these employers to be able to find employees. There's two fixes to the body gap that we're seeing. One is affordable housing, one is transportation. It's just a small shot to try to help that. And the service will still run through Greenway Station. It still runs out to Q basically, and then back down Allen. So it could actually help Middleton Springs and other areas as well. Our focus has just been downtown at this point. So just a little more background information prior to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. So the next one is Ed Solner.
If I can, can I wait until the agreement on the Cardinal project?
I...
Done now.
No, you got to speak now if you don't mind.
All right.
My name is Ed Solner, and I'm the architect of record for the Cardinal Apartments on Parramatta and Clark Street. I'd just like to share a few comments with you regarding the agreement that we're asking for tonight, which is a variance state code. The State of Wisconsin uses the International Billing Code as a bible to the construction process that is obviously throughout the State of Wisconsin. That was adopted many, many years ago and is, again, the device that we use for all planning decisions throughout the billing process. When the plans were submitted to the elevator state review board, they were rejected for the building that we're talking about. And our agreement today is based on getting an approval of the variance that we're asking for. The IBC, the International Billing Committee, code rather, defines the need for a stretcher-type elevator for a building that is four stories or more above grade or four stories or more below grade. And the State of Wisconsin adopted a Wisconsianism four years ago that changes that somewhat. The Wisconsianism that Wisconsin adopted was to have an elevator with a stretcher capacity for all floors, so second, two, three, and on up or down. And that's why we're here today. The plans were submitted to the state, the elevator plans, and they were rejected. And the reason they were rejected was because of that Wisconsianism that appeared four years At a meeting with Mr. Wench at the billing site, and the billing inspector, and other members of EMS and the fire department about a week ago, we discussed what would be necessary to accommodate people that are in need of transportation on a stretcher. And of course, what we have there right now is not available for that. We can accommodate a wheelchair and a few other people within the elevator size that we're talking about, but not a stretcher capacity. And in our case, there is a situation that Mr. Wench brought up that would provide for resuscitation by a mechanical means that would be better than any of the rescuers that would provide for that particular service if a person has to be transported from a unit down to the outside via the stairway. And we concluded by the letter that I think all of you received that there is a CPR device that Mr. Wench was emphatic about using, and because of the fact that the owner said that they would purchase that unit, there was a sense of an agreement with EMS that the variance would be granted. In addition to buying one of the units, which cost $20,000, Mr. Wench asked for three units to be purchased, one for each of the vehicles. The owner agreed to that. And within a short time, I think we'd like to see that taken place. I'm surprised that our EMS doesn't have that at the present time, but we'll proceed to get that provided. There is also a grant that's available through the federal government for a unit like that. And even though Mr. Mazur will be paying the $60,000 upfront to keep the project rolling, we will also be requesting of the city of Middleton to provide a grant service to cover that cost. I don't agree on the code situation. In fact, I have been interested in getting that code changed. And I've done some paperwork already, and I'm hoping that we can get back to what the IBC has to offer, basically getting the four stories or more up or down to be potential. So with that, I'll just step aside and hope that the agreement is in a positive way unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Ed. So the next one is Shelley.
Myself and some other people met with the License and Ordinance-
Take your name and address, please.
Oh, sure. Shelley Kennedy. And I'm a Monona resident, 712 Pirate Island Road, apartment B. We met with the License and Ordinance Committee last week discussing repealing the ordinance for marijuana possession for adult use in private. So that's why we're here today again. Basically, we just wanted to reiterate that our hope is the bond amount be reduced to zero for adult possession and for private use as well. This is kind of consistent with what the Middleton Police Chief said at the last License and Ordinance Committee meeting, that they don't consider this offense that is pursued or that should be pursued that often. And I know that there was another issue that was brought up or a concern that with this type of ordinance, if the person is using, and there's like a smell in a multi-unit apartment, there's always an issue of that. Well, if that's an issue in the police or something, that issue can always still be enforced as well through the landlord-tenants agreements, through other nuisance ordinances. And I know when we worked on this in Monona, that was kind of a concern with them as well. But in the end, the general consensus was, oops, that these issues can be dealt with through landlord and tenant agreements and through other methods as well. So just wanted to bring up that concern. So what we wanted to reiterate was that we would like to see the bond amount to be zero. I realize that this is a state and federal issue as well, and we do work on the state level. With the current political climate in Wisconsin, the best thing that we can do is take these baby steps, these progressive communities, and that really speaks to other senators and legislators or representatives, that they do something more within the state as well. A lot of the times, these bills that are introduced die within the committee. They don't go to assembly or anything. They're just dead in the water. So by more progressive communities taking these steps, I think it speaks more loudly to our state leaders as well. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish here.
Thank you, Shelley. So the next one is Abby. Andy. Well, sorry, Andy.
Andy Van Dym, yes. And I'm at 1415 West Skyline Drive, and I also was part of the discussion last week with the Licensing and Ordinance Committee relative to the proposition that the forfeiture for possession and consumption of cannabis be reduced to zero. And I just wanted to echo the comments that were just made, that normal is the National Organization for the repeal of, reform of marijuana laws is active at the state and the national levels. And we're, of course, very aware of Senator Urpenbach's proposals as well as Representative Jarko's. But we all know that with the current political landscape in Wisconsin and federally, that no progress is being made right now. And in fact, we all know that these well-meaning bills don't even get out of committee. And that's really why we're focusing on local jurisdictions, because we think it's critical for progressive communities to stand up and have their elected local representatives take the actions that they have the authority to take and to serve as examples to other communities in the state and to state legislatures. And I think especially in a state that doesn't have binding referendums statewide, it's incumbent on local jurisdictions to stand up and reflect the will of the people through ordinances within their own communities. You know, the numbers from the 2014 county referendum, I think, made it very clear that Middleton voters support further relaxation of marijuana laws. So we're really just asking that the council take action to reflect what the majority of Middleton voters want. Now, we all know Wisconsin used to be known nationwide as a leader in progressive social causes. Workers' compensation, the progressive income tax, child labor laws, corrupt practices laws, they were all invented in Wisconsin. But these days, our current state politicians seem focused more on making sure that Wisconsin lags behind the rest of the country. And unfortunately, they are succeeding. That makes it all the more important for local representatives and Wisconsin's progressive communities like Middleton demonstrate that progressive policies still have a home. And I think that reducing Middleton's bond amount to zero is just one small action that Middleton can take to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. So the next one is Mas or Mar?
Sorry, that was my bad handwriting there. You probably couldn't read my name. Nice to see you, Mayor Bar, and the rest of the council. My name's Max, live at 7143 Calipas. I'm here again just to urge the council to further discuss the relaxation of the cannabis ordinance. Two weeks ago, we'd come and spoke, and you had directed the License and Ordinance Committee to review the ordinance. I went to that committee meeting, spoke there. I didn't feel like there was due diligence given at that meeting to reviewing the ordinance. We heard it was a respectful conversation. We heard a lot from the police, the police department, as well as city council members and some interested citizens like myself, but didn't feel like the conversation, that there was actually a lot of depth to the conversation. So I would really urge this council to either, in some way, either redirect that back to License and Ordinance Committee or take up that conversation yourselves. A point was made that there were only 60 citations made, I believe, in the past year or so. And also, another comment was made by the police, that this isn't a big issue. So I would urge the council to consider getting the ordinance in line with the actual police policy. If the police aren't prioritizing these citations, then why have it documented in the ordinance that it's $100, $200, $300 for successive citations? Doesn't make much sense to me. There's also a point made that it's a nuisance in certain apartment buildings. I used to work in a dorm. I was an RA. Definitely dealt with some of those issues. Generally, apartment buildings managers, they have policies in place where they can deal with something like that. If they need to bring outside law enforcement in, then obviously, I think there are other citations that can be made in that case. You've heard Andy's story, you've heard other people's story about how they use marijuana. There are lots of criminal justice reasons why I think Middleton should kind of fall in line with other municipalities around Madison, including Monona. I really urge this area to be a leader in this policy, and we've seen lots of states actually legalize marijuana. We're not here to advocate for that at all. We're here to advocate for decriminalizing marijuana. And it would affect those 60 people who were cited. Can't give you... I'm not privy to all that information, so I can't give you the details like the police department could, but that would ease, I think, the burden for those folks. So again, really hope that you take this back up or redirect it back to the council. I really don't feel like due diligence was done on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Anyone else who might like to speak to the council? Mike?
I just think we can't let this time pass without mentioning the loss of a real pillar of the community in Al Rip, the executive director of MOM. And I know several of you were at the visitation or the funeral today, and it's really a testament to Al's effect on the community to see hundreds of people. I think we... Joanna and I were estimating the church was filled three times over last night, probably close to 1,000 people there. And they weren't all Rips. They weren't all family members. But there were quite a few of those, too, including two of our employees, Michelle Marx, who's his niece, and Jessica Rip, who is married to his nephew. Al, on a personal level, has not only done so much for Middleton Outreach Ministry and bringing stability and a real servant leadership to the organization, but even when he was with TDS, he was a pillar of the community in the work that he did in the private sector as well as in his spare time. And one of those was through the United Way Day of Care project each year. And Al took charge of that day and organization, and he made sure that every child that we brought to the park got a fishing pole. And so he took it upon himself, if we hadn't raised enough money, that he would make sure that every child had a fishing pole. Great guy. We will miss him incredibly, and I just thought we couldn't not say something about it at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Yeah, I was there last night with Joanna and some of the other folks as well. So it was close to 1,000 people there, and I got to know Al about 20 years ago doing scouting for food to begin with, so thank you. Anyone else want to say anything? Okay, so I close this part of the meeting, and the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so I will call the questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pause? So the consent agenda is passed, and it is the Common Council Minus Audit of the Bills and application for the expanded premises for downtown Milton Business Association, and application for the Craftman's Table, and application for fermented malt beverage for wine and license for when next Milton LLC. So the next one is the resolution, and it's 1017-23, Milton Common Council's Commitment to Assist Pharmaceutical Product Development, commonly called PPD, expansion at 8551 Research Way.
Move approval is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? So Mike, do you want to explain something? What is what we are doing here?
By this resolution, the staff will start working more intently on legal agreements with PPD that would put in place developer-finance TIF for this project, which means that the owner of the property, capital IRA, would through their taxes pledged by the city to cover costs for parking, and it's tax increment from the development. So it's not from general taxpayers, it's from that development itself. It wouldn't cover all of the costs. Some of those costs would have to be covered by the property owner and PPD working in concert with the city. PPD's embraced that concept. Bob Verdenich is here from PPD. We're hoping that their tax increment will provide sufficient resources to enable all of those 300-some additional employees and to find a place to park. And I think it's a genuine partnership we're talking about here, using tax increment financing as we have so successfully with our other companies. And Bob mentioned investment of $53 million, and that's in addition to many times that over the last 10 or so years that PPD has invested in the community and in their employees as well.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions from the council folks?
And Bob Verdenich, I can mention this here.
Okay.
If you have any questions, we're handling it.
Any questions? If there are no more questions, I will call the question. Motion was made by Howard Teal, second by Mark. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pause? The motion is passed. So the next motion is, next resolution is 2017-24. This is the Redevelopment of District Number One Plan Amendment Number One at the Boundary Amendment Designation.
I'll move approval.
Seconded.
Okay. So is Eileen here if she wants to explain it simply? Eileen?
I can tell you briefly.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a statutory step that's peculiar to the Redevelopment Plan statute, where there is a formal designation of boundaries before the redevelopment plan is approved. So this will come back to you again sometime soon after a public hearing, after specific notification of the property owners in the area being added to the redevelopment plan. You're going to think you're approving the same thing a second time, but you're not. This is a preliminary step that the statute requires. Fair enough?
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Just changing the boundary so that we can do something.
Well, again, this would be designating the boundaries, but there will still need to be an amended redevelopment plan, and it's the plan that provides the legal authority to do anything.
Any other question? Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pause? So the motion is passed. So the next resolution is 2017-25, Defining Terms for Advances and Transfer Made to the Golf Course Fund from the General Fund and the Tax Incremental Financing District Theory.
Will we defer?
Okay, any questions? Yeah, there was a second. No, Susan has.
Oh, she did?
Yes. Okay, so this is the motion is to defer, and I'm going to call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pause? So the motion is deferred. So the next one is item number four. This is 2017-26, Common Council Support for Partnership with the Milton Cross Plain Area School District for Program Capacity Needs.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Go ahead, Mike.
There are three new council members this year who weren't privy to the closed session discussion we had back in January. So as way of background for the three of you, the discussion that we had is now moving forward in a public manner, in that we're seeking in this partnership, again, the process of acquiring land that could be used for the high school expansion. We're not getting too specific at this point, because the school district has a planning committee, long-term planning committee, that has a lot of work in front of it through the summer and fall, and it's a general resolution of support for this partnership. But what it means is that the city would be acquiring these properties, starting through appraisals, relocation assistance for tenants that are currently in those properties, and to begin necessary work on the property if it needs to be remediated as well. It's in our TIF District Number Five, and so we have the ability to take that kind of a lead role, even though the school district would not have a referendum until fall of 2018, would not know that they have the resources to commit to this. So it's a bit of trust on the city's part to move ahead, but it's trust based on the success of our tax increment districts. And I think trust based upon the success of the school district and the understanding of the voters in this community of how important it is to put the resources into that kind of a partnership. We've done this successfully in the past. The last high school referendum back in, I think, 1999, I was actually here for that, and the city did play a role with the school district, because it's hemmed in for the high school campus. And it's a great success to have the expansion of that high school within the central part of our city, not separating high schools, not stretching our resources on the north side of town, or I think that's about the only side of town they could go on if they were going to be in Middleton, like they have in other committees. There have been instances where the high school goes further out, and then it no longer is accessible to the majority of the residents of the community. So I request your support for this. So, um, I, uh, request your support for this. Uh, I know in the closed session, there was a lot of enthusiasm, both from the council members that were there, as well, as well as the school board. Bob Green, who's the school board president, is here. George Mavrolis, the superintendent, uh, with whom we've worked the most on this to date, and it's been about a year now that we've been working on this with the school district. And we now have two property owners who are willing to sell and have made that intention known, but they also wanna have some kind of certainty that something's going to happen because they have tenants to either keep or to, to, uh, find other locations. So that's why it's important that we start with this step. Uh, George, is there anything that you or Bob would like to add?
I think you've, you've said it well. Um, we value our partnership.
We want you to be on microphone.
Oh.
Yes.
Bobby, you have to say. Tell me you were marked for this.
I'm not sure you even realized, I didn't realize how much of a partnership, uh, we actually had with the city until we looked at some of our property lines. For example, Clark Street Community School is owned by the school district, it's on city property. Uh, we were talking about the, uh, the Baumann, the outdoor pool is actually on district property, but owned by the city. And so, the, the collaboration and overlap is, is, goes pretty deep. And so this is an opportunity to, uh, explore the, the opportunity to expand our high school through a campus, uh, style, uh, rather than adding, uh, just to the existing building, to spread students out more, uh, to look at partnerships with local businesses, to create kind of an entrepreneur, uh, type, type of center, um, to really think outside the box, and not just have, uh, four-walled classrooms, but to really think about what programming might be in this new, uh, capacity, um, of space that, uh, we could acquire here. So, that's kind of the big picture vision. Bob?
Um, Mike mentioned something important as well, and this is kind of a trust issue right now, because, as you mentioned, we can't make a commitment until referendum gets passed. So what we're working on is the past relationship that we've had with the city, as well as the future relationship we had, which has been very good, and I just wanna say thank you for that, regardless of whatever happens here. Um, but for this to occur, there has to be a trust level between our board and your board as well. And right now, we're working, our administration's working well with your administration, we appreciate the cooperation, we appreciate the ability to do something that's be quite outs, quite outside the box. But it's a big leap that I think has a big payback, 'cause that area close to the roundabout there, that's an area that needs some development. Hopefully, we can move more traffic through that area, and also increase development in an area that needs more development, and also perhaps get some relief from our residential areas as well. So, I just wanna say thank you in advance for willing to work with us and, and willing to establish a trust relationship, and I wanna thank you for what you've done in the past and what you'll do in the future.
I just wanted to think, um, if the council passes a resolution tonight, we have a similar resolution, uh, that we're gonna ask the Board of Education to pass Monday night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
I, I thought of just one other thing, too. I don't think I emphasized the private sector component of this as much, but it's gonna be private as well as public through the city and the school district. Uh, yet to be defined, but we have some ideas about how the school, the high school can engage, uh, the private sector to the, uh, a mutual advantage. And that is a big component of this, and it's, it's bearish stating that because we're talking about the use of tax increment finance.
Any questions, Frank? Yes?
I have a question for Mike. So, um, I'm not, I don't have a law degree, but just reading through this, what this is committing us to right now is just staff time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Not committing to actual purchase of property. Uh, you could be committing on a subsequent agenda item for relocation services, appraisal, relocation, negotiation. But you aren't with this, uh, proposed resolution.
Any other questions, either to Mike, or George, or, uh, Bob? Okay, well, thank you, guys. So I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of this, uh, resolution say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to pause? So the resolution is passed. So I'm gonna go to the set of a related item. This is under, uh, Ward of Beds, Courts and Professional Services, that's item number three. This is the Ward of Prairie Land Services for relocation assistance for school district program capacity needs, twenty-six thousand dollar. Mike, is there anything which you want to say on this one, or is it pretty straightforward?
Move approval.
Second.
Abby's memo says it pretty well, but we've, uh, already engaged with Prairie on a couple of other projects. It is difficult to find these kind of companies. We now have a really good working relationship with them, and, uh, that's who we're recommending. And, uh, the price is reasonable.
Any questions on this one? Any other questions? Okay, if there are no more questions, uh, I call the question. All those in favor of this say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to pause? So the Ward of, uh, to the Prairie Land Services is passed. So we go back to now agreements, and the first agreement is, uh, supporting a petition for variance in state of Wisconsin building plan review for cardinal row apartments related to elevator size. Need a motion?
You know what? Uh, we gotta get this started, so I'll, I'll move that we, uh, reject as approved, as recommended by Finance, and we can discuss it from there.
Second.
Okay, so let's...
I would like to hear from Steve Watch and get his comments on this issue.
Steve?
Um, just to take an opportunity to really build upon what Ed Solinger had talked to you about, and probably clarify more than anything, uh, all the steps I went into is each of you received, uh, the memorandum that I, uh, crafted last week. Um, essentially, just a quick review, um, the building project is, at this point, well underway. Um, it was a little over two weeks ago that I got contacted by Ed, more or less explaining their dilemma. Uh, they got deep into that, finding out that the state of Wisconsin, in fact, uh, could not approve their elevator plan. And although Ed refers to it as Wisconsin-ism, um, that particular provision which requires full-size elevators is becoming very commonplace across the country for very, you know, good reason. When you have multi-unit apartment buildings, of course, you've got a, you know, a collection of residents that, when given a medical emergency, you know, sometimes difficult to navigate, um, structure. When we have to do the worst-case scenario, which I describe as a cardiac recess, uh, resuscitation, um, our equipment is a six-foot stretcher. CPR is done on a, you know, level hardboard that fits onto that, and by having access, and you have to go up and down, an elevator makes it easier to remove someone versus taking that, going downstairs, et cetera. So, current cardiac, um, resuscitation standards out there strongly recommend that there not be any longer than five seconds of interruption in compressions. So, again, the elevator can facilitate that. Now, in the interest of hearing all those arguments out there, I don't advocate for, you know, I'm not in support of that, or that. I am in support of those particular code standards out there. The situation they found themselves in there, they have an elevator, but instead of being six-foot depth, it's five-foot depth. Doesn't meet the code. It doesn't allow us to take a full-size stretcher into that when we have a resuscitation situation. So, knowing codes were written years ago, um, someone in Wisconsin adopted four years ago, like everything else in the medical industry out there, there's since been tech, technology advances out there. There is now a device called this autopulse system, which I refer to, which can actually do mechanically deliver CPR better than humans can. Um, it's cost prohibitive. It'd be nice for us to have that, but, you know, we don't. And especially in the multifamily buildings out there that are compliant, we go about doing our work as we have all day long. It's a very labor-intensive, you know, difficult, you know, thing, but we do it, because that's the standard that's been set. So, when I heard the explanation out there, I could, I could not, what was first being asked for is simply, um, supporting the original variance request to say, hey, I'm okay with a five-foot elevator. I'm not okay with a five-foot elevator. But with the advent of this other equipment out there, if we required that, it would certainly be, um, a very useful alternative, not only in that building, but even in all the other places that we encounter those situations, meaning single-family residences that aren't subject to such codes out there. So there is some sideline benefit to the general community. And believe me, I wanna emphasize to all of you, my job, I feel, in this community is to always advocate and look out for the health and safety of all of our citizens. I can tell you that, the proposal they put here, I can say that not only for the health and safety of the citizens in that building, this is, um, a reasonable and beneficial proposal there and outside of that. Um, certainly, I understand, and I read, um, what Matt Fleming had written to all of you, um, full disclosure, you know, there is an investment that has to be made here. What we're asking for is this, you know, building owner, uh, to make that upfront investment, not only for the initial purchase, but there's subsequently been long-term maintenance contracts and extended warranties on that equipment out there. Um, that number that is written into that agreement was, you know, at this time, the best estimate going forward, as far as we can tell, you know, say five, ten, fifteen years out into the future. Um, but, I would say, I guess I'm saying to you that I do not, um, really have any reservations about this. And Eric Hanson, who actually is a representative from Department of Safety and Professional Services from the state of Wisconsin, uh, was made aware of this, and he essentially, you know, reviews all of these types of variances out there, and he was in concurrence that it was a good proposal, and all he needed was, of course, evidence of the, um, uh, agreements and all the other questions that they had put forth in a four-bullet-point, uh, response back. So, beyond that, um, I, I believe this is a, you know, opportunity for a beneficial arrangement. I would not at all suggest that the city of Milton should take on any more, um, you know, financial burden that we can project far out into the future. So whatever that number is, by all means, I think that's appropriate. Um, other than that, I believe, and I, I can't speak on behalf, but I'm then leading to understand that if this variance is be rejected, there would need to be a pretty significant, um, investment by the owner to remedy their situation with the building that is now, in my estimation, looking at probably seventy-five percent complete. I did do a walkthrough with the city building inspector, looked at all of it, um, and certainly, uh, from what I can tell, in building construction I know, it would require, um, some pretty significant jackhammering of concrete foundation to get, uh, a one-foot larger elevator put into there. So, other than that, the building inspector and I, um, you know, certainly discussed everything, and I believe the proposed agreement that was out there, I believe addresses, um, any concerns that I would have. And I think, um, in light of that, I would be in favor of this. Any questions that you, my count?
You currently have six-foot long carts?
Yes.
So, in order for this to work, you're gonna take your six-foot long cart, put an autopulse device on the patient, and then carry him down four flights of stairs?
Uh, no, actually, the stretcher gets totally out of the equation. So the autopulse device, and I don't have to look into it for sure, it actually is a half-sized, um, SIF board, which actually has all the mechanics of the device that goes under the waist-up portion of the, um, patient. And then below that, all incorporated into this is a heavy-duty tarp that essentially is flexible, and I'm not gonna do it now, but if you're interested, there's a three-minute video out there that shows exactly these situations, where you can take them around tight corners, up and downstairs, into sharp elevators. Um, essentially, first, you know, the lower extremities have no role in resuscitation, and this device, when you can carry them, is flexible from anything from the waist down. But the important part, which is the actual compressions, those are continuous. And like I said, the goal is, um, no longer in the annual CPR, five-second interruptions, even when done with our current conventions out there, it's still, from time to time, requires some interruptions. Um, we do our best to minimize that. This particular device, it is continuous. And when you actually see that the, uh, technology behind it, and all the diagnostic and, uh, measurements that it takes, uh, blood chemistry, everything from oxygen saturation to the end tidal CO2 levels, it mimics an actual human being who is, um, breathing and, you know, circulating blood on their own. Now, of course, there's other factors that determine, even though this device can deliver that, long-term survival, which has nothing to do with, um, the actual condition of the heart and that type of thing. So, it's, it's pretty phenomenal technology, but very, you know, expensive to invest in.
Yes, seriously.
Steve, how many, uh, departments around here have this particular device?
It's new technology, and actually talking with Zol, who's the manufacturer of all of our, uh, other cardiac monitors and, and equipment, uh, right now, of course, it's kind of, you know, catching the area by storm. I'm told right now, Milwaukee County as a whole is finishing a study of it, and they are prepared to pretty much equip the entire county, all the areas in Milwaukee County with it. So, um, I can't tell you across the state how many have it, but it's...
What, in this local area?
Um, right now, we would probably be the first. Um, one other, if you're ready to give you another thing, I, I wanted to say, example, when we talk about, um, other things, you know, the benefits to our organization, you know, again, resuscitations are, are extremely labor-intensive and present risk to all rescuers out there, especially when navigating difficult buildings. Um, and I'll give you an example, four years ago, in a private residence, um, we had the exact situation where we had someone on a second-floor tight bedroom, where we had to actually put them onto one of these long hardboards and try and navigate down the narrow hallway. In the process of doing that, one of our paramedics basically herniated his abdomen. He was out of work for four months because of the physical activity that's involved in that. So, this device certainly makes situations like that, you know, beneficial as well. So, while I'm not, you know, I guess saying that I'm, I'm looking to, uh, you know, give anyone a, uh, kind of shortcut or an easy pass on this, I just think this is kind of a mutually beneficial situation that is worthy of your consideration. I totally respect, um, all of the other, you know, questions that have come along with this, but I just wanted to make sure you had full disclosure of, you know, all the, the things to consider. So, I'm...
Howard?
Yeah, um, Steve, the EMS is dispatched from the county, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, can you always be assured that one of Milton's EMS, uh, vehicles would show up at this particular apartment?
I can ask one hundred percent of times that that was the case. So, yes, it is, it is possible that you could get a surrounding unit from the community that you have to respond.
Yes.
If we issue a variance for this building, does that mean any building in the future could request a variance if we have these in our EMS system, um, ambulances?
I can speak, uh, on behalf of the state of Wisconsin, but my understanding of this is, um, the case was made based on a circumstance right now that probably, uh, was less than ideal, and, and I'm trying to play, um, some sort of a judge or jury here. Whoever made that decision in the planning process and the approval process, in my opinion, dropped the law. And, you know, that's at least my understanding. I don't believe that this puts the state of Wisconsin, who ultimately does all kinds of approvals and considers all variances for various circumstances, in a position that don't negate code. Code is still code. When you design a building, you go through the, you know, plan approval process out there, you're expected to comply with it. For whatever reason, that didn't happen here, and I can't explain, don't choose to even explain why it happened, but I believe the approach that was being asked, how this first came to me, is to simply, here, sign off on this and say it's okay. Once again, looking out for the health and safety of all citizens, I wasn't about to do that. I did offer up, uh, a potential solution out there, and at that point in time, I stopped communicating with the requister of the, uh, the letter from me, and I communicated directly with the state of Wisconsin. So, this really was a discussion between them, and offered that up. They looked at it and said, it's worthy of consideration, or here are the things we need you to do, one of which is develop an agreement, you know, define ownership, all the points that pretty much are addressed in that agreement out there. So, go ahead.
I guess my question would be more for Eileen, then. Is this a consideration when people are submitting plans for the future? Is this something they can request smaller elevators now? I mean, obviously not per code for the state of Wisconsin, but...
Well, I think, oh, sorry. I think Steve answered it correctly in terms of the building code. We don't, we don't typically deal with it in the planning department, it's the, the building code, and I think he's right, it doesn't, it doesn't... I think he's right, it doesn't preclude the code being followed in the future. I just wanted to correct one thing, I think this is just, it's a two-story, it's a two-story building. We're talking about...
Yes.
We said this is just a four-year-old regulatory standard now that changed this to have, require six-foot wide elevators. If you were to kind of guess what percentage of buildings in our locale have this new six-foot elevator versus older buildings that might have a smaller elevator? Is there a percentage that you're already dealing with, I guess, of smaller elevator spaces where this would just be one more, but we get the benefit of this technology that works in all of these apartment buildings?
Certainly, there are some older buildings. I can think of two right off the top of my head. One of those used to be referred to as Anne's Manor on your L Boulevard. That's actually a nightmare of a building because that elevator's even five feet, it's three feet. And it's, you might as well not even have one for that. Another one is, I believe it's the Ross House, does not have a full-depth, you know, elevator in it. And there used to be one in 6710, but I'm not sure, I think that was updated when the building was updated. So those are a couple that come to mind. Certainly, new construction that's out there, yes. And in fact, if you ever kind of walk into a building, if you ever see what this common EMS power life signal right on the outside of the elevator, that's an indicator, that's a compliant elevator, that we can, you know, that's the one to choose because we know we can fit our ambulance stretcher in it. And of course, all kinds of other types of buildings, healthcare facilities, et cetera, you know, it's not mandated, this is a residential facility, it's mandated because of that. Even when the fire station was built, it was required to have an elevator because of multiple things and you had to be a full-size elevator. So there's various codes that apply to, you know, various types of facilities. This happens to be a residential facility, which, you know, as was alluded to, also kind of got incorporated into some of those out there. So I guess if you're saying this type of facility out there, you know, there's plenty of apartment buildings, multi-unit apartment buildings that don't meet ADA requirements existing, that don't have any elevator, but again, they were built in, you know, a former time. They are what they are.
Kathy?
Are you familiar with the grant that Mr. Soldo referenced in his presentation?
Not, because I can tell you over the years, the only grant programs that we typically are available to us is something called AFR, Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And I've applied for that many times. When we built our station, we got a ninety-some thousand dollar grant for the exhaust removal system in there, but they change our priorities every year and what they are. And I've actually, at least three times, applied to get this, you know, in, over the last successive years, similar type EMS equipment and as well as these types of things that I know of in the area. So far, they haven't, you know, been successful enough. He's purring the more information, I'd be happy to hear it, but I would not, in my opinion, make any of these agreements contingent upon that. I, you know, certainly is aware of it, I'd be fooled not to, you know, pursue it, but I wouldn't even put one bit of confidence that that is something that we would be likely to get, so.
Susan?
Yeah, I've got a question, I think it's maybe more for Larry. If we granted this variance, would it set a precedent that the next builder that comes in and puts a five-foot elevator in can come back asking us for a variance?
No, but my concern about this is more global. And the, and as a former litigator, first thing comes to my mind is EMS shows up, either they don't have this unit, or it's broken, or it's some other EMS, they can't get in the elevator, the clock is ticking, and someone upstairs is dying.
In this particular building?
And guess who is going to get sued?
The city.
The city. It's not that the EMS did anything wrong, it's going to be the decision to grant something that is related to the, directly related to the health and safety of the people living there. And of course, we can't compel older buildings to be modified, but anything built new, one would certainly expect that to be the case. And, you know, to be honest, you know, this new technology sounds wonderful and it's probably something that should be submitted in a budget and approved by the city in the normal course of events. The very fact that it was, that the equipment came in exchange for the variance, I think makes it look worse, not better, far worse. And I agree with Matt Fleming completely on this. I don't, I, this is not at all intended to criticize Steve at all, but the circumstances are really not where, you know, it certainly would not be my recommendation to grant the variance.
So Steve, I have a question for you, like, there's the older apartments, Brittany apartments, Cedar Crest, Arbor Lakes, do they have elevators or they do not?
I'm trying to pull them, I don't remember any of these, it's, most of them do not, you know.
So that will be true for Spring Tree as well as others?
Sure. Any of the standard, what we call garden-style apartments, you know, sixteen, twenty-four units, two-story balcony-type things, no. And even to this day, you know, you can find it all over, you know, the state, city, you know, county, that's just something we have to contend with anytime you're dealing with these buildings out there, so.
Does the city hall elevator have, need to report?
I do not believe so.
Absolutely not.
It doesn't have the symbol on it, no.
So there are only few apartment complexes which are new and which probably meet this requirement, and I would think the majority of them do not in Milton.
Correct, just because, again, it's, you know, that's not to say that some buildings weren't designed and they voluntarily put them in. You know, I can tell you the Heritage Stadium Living Community over on, you know, Maplewood, different type of facility again, but they do have residential components to that, but they still have full-size elevators, so.
But I don't think the question really is whether or not older buildings have elevators or not. The question is, do we want to give a variance to a brand-new building?
Right.
Doesn't mean code, so that we can get these machines. I'd love to wave a wand and have these, I mean, they sound absolutely wonderful and they would be great for the city. But I concur with Larry that I think we would be better off to put it as a budget item, buying for the EMS instead of trading them for a variance. It just doesn't feel right.
Joanna?
Yeah, that's well said, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I appreciate that you get an opportunity to at least weigh all the, I guess, arguments if you will, and as I said, I am certainly willing to stand in whatever decision that you come up with.
Well, Ed wants to say something, I know he spoke before, is there something you want to add, Ed? It's okay, I don't see a problem.
Well, but it's kind of debate with the audience.
Yeah, we don't debate with the audience.
Well, let's see what he has to say, he's an architect, so. Mike, what do you say, so do we allow this or not?
Well, it's council prior, and we typically don't have public hearings for a GND.
It's a matter of discretion, but it would be contrary to standard city policy for the course of many years.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I got to, you did have your piece, you got to say it, and now we're just going to have to vote on it, so. That's, those are the rules. Okay, well, any more discussion, folks? Okay, so I'm going to call the question.
The motion is to deny.
Yeah, yeah, so the motion is to deny the variance. Okay, all those in favor of denying the variation, say aye.
Aye.
And all those favor, all those against this, say aye. Okay, so this is unanimous. Okay, well, we move on to the next item. Planning and zoning. So this is the concept review for Artis Reith Office Development, additional story on proposed building at 1630 Aspen Commons, planning committee of finance meeting.
Local approvals recommended by finance.
Any discussion?
Just to be clear, this item is on the plan review, so this isn't the same as the planning side, which was for the TIF item in the next section. There's two items, there's the concept review of the building as the planning item and the TIF.
This is the planning.
Okay.
So is that clear to everyone, this is the planning item? Okay, any questions for, anybody, for Bill or me or anyone else? Okay, if there are no more, if there are no questions, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So the next one is the budget and TIF item. Item number one is the request for tax, intimal financing, district theory, increased assistance to Artis Reith Office Development, 1630 Aspen Commons. It is for asking for TIF for the item which we just passed about.
Local approvals recommended by finance. Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is the money part now. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of this TIF money, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes.
So we'll get a agreement prepared.
Yeah. So the next item is the project funding for Pleasant View Road, left turn of Bay at ETC and Market West Parking Lot, these were two items, which Sean combined into one. So Sean, do you want to say anything here or?
Local approvals recommended by Public Works. Second.
Do you want to add anything or should we?
Unless there's a question.
Any questions?
There is.
Yes, Robert?
Just, I just want to make sure, is the reason we're switching from concrete to asphalt just to save money, was there a benefit to switching back to asphalt?
I think the city staff and equipment capabilities of pavement repair are much better with asphalt than with reinforced concrete.
Okay, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the next is the ward of bid, court and professional services, and the first item is ward of bid to Walt Paving for Amherst Road, million overlay for $146,207.
Local approvals recommended by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? I think this road needs to be fixed as soon as possible.
I would agree with that.
Okay, and well, if there's no discussion, I'm going to call the question. All of those favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the next item is item number two, ward of bid to LC United Painting for Elevator Tank Number One on High Road, painting for $187,500. Public works.
Local approvals recommended by finance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Sean, are we going to paint a big cardinal on the top of the tank?
Big smiley face.
Someone does that, right?
I don't know.
There is one in Wisconsin that does.
Yeah.
Smiley face.
Probably crazy.
Summerfest.
But all joking aside, is it just like gray, is it, I mean, basically?
We tended to do blue and light blue.
Okay.
It disappeared in the sky during the day, was it?
So Sean, I got a question for you, this L and T painting, did you actually call them and ask them why they were going to paint for exterior overcoat was $56,000? I mean, that's why you're rejecting them, they are the lower bidder?
Right, but not the low responsible bidder.
What do you mean by lower responsible bidder?
That particular bid item, there was a mistake in preparing their bid where they were juggling several proposals at the same time and instead of a 500,000-gallon tank, they were putting in a bid price on a 200,000-gallon tank.
Oh.
And missed badly. The funds needed to do that work.
So you have talked to them?
Yes.
Okay.
They withdrew their bid.
We did.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Sean or anyone, so? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So the next one is the amendment to bid approval to Payne and Dolan for paving virtually segment of Grabber Pond to Faz and Branch Conservancy Trail for $48,230.
Local approvals recommended by finance. Second.
Any question? This is, yes, Elizabeth?
I have a question for Matt.
Yes, Matt.
I loved your memo, thank you very much for that. I had a question about it. You noted in here that the amount did not include the base bid amount, and when I reviewed the actual bid sheet, it seems that they did not, it says no bid for base bid amount under Payne and Dolan Inc. So if you're going to say that they didn't include the bid, why are we now including it? Does that still make them the lowest responsible bidder?
It's one of the reasons why this was confusing. The base bid included porous asphalt. They did not submit a bid for porous. We took the alternate bid, which was traditional asphalt, to save on funds for this project, to get it within budget marks. So that's why there was some confusion with this. So what we're doing is, we're saying the alternate amount for traditional asphalt, and when we brought this the first time, we didn't have the base bid included with the alternate. So now this includes the base with the alternate amount for traditional asphalt.
Is that good explanation?
Yes.
Any other?
Yeah, just the question I didn't hear answered was, is this still the lowest bid?
It is the lowest bid, whether you include, if you look at porous as an option or traditional asphalt, they are the lowest bidder.
Okay, thank you.
And you're going to make sure that this is the second time, it doesn't happen again, so?
We'll be bringing contract or documentation to finance council.
Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. Now we move on to the miscellaneous, item number one, acceptance of the 2016 audited financial statements, finance committee.
I'll move that we accept the financial statements. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if there's no more questions, I will call the question. All those in favor of accepting the 2016 audited financial statements, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is the review bond amounts for the congestion of controlled substances, cannabis, 16.031B, LNO, LNO is supposed.
I would recommend, what LNO proposed or recommended, that the current bond amounts remain the same.
Second that. I just want to make a comment, contrary to what some of our speakers thought, I thought that LNO listened very responsibly and we were, we certainly have a level of understanding for the folks that deal with medical issues, and we talked about that. But what it came down to was there had to be a mechanism for protecting people that would be disturbed by this, and if we took these bond amounts away completely, we would have no way of dealing with it where it was a nuisance to somebody else or to somebody else's child. But contrary to what some of our speakers said today, I believe that LNO gave it a fair hearing and a fair discussion, and it was a consensus of the committee that we keep the bond amounts, I'm saying this aye.
And I would like to add, when we considered this a year ago, we spent a considerable amount of time doing due diligence, talking to police department, our municipal judge, city attorneys, so I think we did do, we did. I would like Chuck to expand on the police department's view, so the rest of us can hear that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Well, this progressive police chief of this progressive city is recommending that we keep the bond amounts where they are. Much of what you said, Dan, I think the statement that we didn't give much attention to this at the Licensed and Organized Committee meetings, negates the fact of what we did a year and a half ago, and I've explained that to the a half ago, and I've explained that to the new alders also. And that being that we did do an in-depth study of all of our municipal ordinance fines, the way the judge deals with people, especially people of poverty who can't pay their fines, how we don't put people in jail because they don't pay their fines, and the relative small number of marijuana citations that we do issue per year. But sometimes that is an alternative that we feel that we need as a tool. I would also like to comment that I keep hearing about the referendums or the votes in 2010 and 2014, those were advisory things on the, that people voted on. One was for legalization of medical marijuana, which this does nothing for. I'm very sympathetic to that issue, but to say that reducing fines to zero somehow helps people use or legally obtain medical marijuana is just not the case. The other one in 2014 was, should marijuana be legal? And again, a very broad overview, not should it be zero fines in the city of Middleton. I'd also submit to you, is this an issue? Mayor, you walk 40,000 steps a day when you are out soliciting votes for your mayor's job. We have three new alders. Our alders are very active in the community. I'm very active in the community. I don't hear a groundswell of support. People are asking me to change the marijuana fines or how unfair it is. So again, I think it's a tool that we need. It's not something that I find to be disproportionate to people of poverty. You can pay 400 bucks for an ounce of marijuana, you can pay $100 fine. I know that's overly simplistic, but marijuana is a fairly expensive drug, and, you know, the fines frankly don't match how expensive the drugs are. And I don't find it to be, when I've looked at our arrests, which is about 60 a year, and that includes juveniles, and juveniles are not affected by this proposed legislation anyway, I don't find it to be disproportionate to ethnic or minority groups. So I'm just asking you to keep it the way it is, please.
One of the things we discussed in LNO, and I think you didn't mention here, but the headline for me is that if we lower the fines to an extent that we, my understanding, please correct me if I'm, it's the criminalized already in the city of Middleton, and if we didn't have this, then we would have to fall back on the state, which would then re-criminalize it.
That's a really interesting point that Matt Fleming brought up, that, yeah, certainly not intended consequence, but it could be the case if we, if our only option was to go with state charges and whether or not our district attorney would charge us. Those are criminal offenses. And middle of the way right here, we'll scratch you out a ticket. So there's a lot less consequences for that.
Chuck, you said the 60 average citations per year. Do you, did you also do an average of how much the fine that was collected on those?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, but I would tie just from my gut feeling, is the vast majority are per offense.
Yeah, because I think most people don't understand that the bond is actually the amount, but that doesn't mean the judge is bound by that.
Oh, good point. I'm sorry, I had to go ahead. Yeah, the judge frequently reduces the monetary, and I'm getting part of her, what I call humanist approach to dealing with people, and oftentimes she will reduce the monetary fine, especially if somebody will go get, you know, some treatment or some educational component, especially with younger people, so. I don't know how much she charges.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So this is review of bond mount, keeping the same, it's passed. So the item number three is the extension of evening metro transit service beginning August 2017, so final-
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Does this cover weekends also? I don't believe so.
No, it does not cover the, anybody who can answer this?
The schedule is for weekdays.
Mike?
I don't know.
My understanding-
It's weekday.
It's just weekdays.
Okay.
But what is this going to do then for the restaurants? I mean, there should be for people to work on Saturday and Sunday and so on. Or is this about the right direction?
It is definitely in the right direction.
Well, one of the things that we talked about in the committee meeting was, not only was this for the restaurant workers, but it was for the university students. I have a daughter who goes up there and studies and needs to come home late, and we also talked about the fact that, for, Doris Schrader said that for some of our older retired people, we don't think throughout the night, having that added, late bus was nice for them if they wanted to go home. So it wasn't, we didn't look at it as just for the restaurants.
Yeah, it is a step in the right direction, but maybe something that they may want to have weekend also sometime.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Kathy. When I go around and talk to people, that's the one big thing which comes over and over when you're in any apartment complexes, weekend, weekend, weekend. Even some of those, mostly it's in department complexes, and it is really, that's the biggest demand actually. So I didn't even know about this, it's just, you know, repeatedly. So I think something that we have to think about and something we should probably think are doing. Yes, Howard?
Something we've done in years past, but I don't think we did it last year, maybe we ought to do it again this year, is to ask for a report from the pet bike people to tell us what the ridership looks like on our bus routes here in town. We've done that before, gives us an idea as to how successful we are or not, and I think we ought to do that, so I ask that we do this. Get a hold of Mark, can I have it?
Mike, could you ask Mark? Okay.
I can tell you, 71 buses, very full.
But I have heard from people about delayed buses. You know, they don't have as many people, so it's good to have that number. I think that's really good, thank you. And I don't know if we could also do the survey, people asking for the weekend service badly on Sundays, if somehow we could do that survey or somehow point that out. But I, from what I know, there's a huge demand for that, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of extension the evening metro transit service beginning August 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is the ordinances. This is the first reading. Final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of general ordinances. So the first item is an ordinance to make section 15.042 related to no parking anytime restriction, LNO.
Move approval.
Need a second.
Second. Just so people understand, we do have to actually have ordinance prepared, but I think from an open meeting's perspective, all the relevant information is before you so that you could treat this as a first reading, and then we could have actual ordinance for you at the next.
Also, we do not have the, okay, all right, so.
I don't see it.
Okay, I didn't see it either, so. Okay, so any questions, comments? If there are no questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Need a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Open meeting is July 18. We won't be here on any ten days.
Wow, you've got a lot of people.